This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Six o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, and I'll call this meeting to order. And we will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. A republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have Sandy read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statute, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And Sandy, take role for us, too, please.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan. Henry Velicker.
Here.
Scott Pritchowski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
And Sandy, you want to start the staff introduction here?
I'm Sandy Stibbs, the city clerk.
Bailey, library director.
Aaron Jensen, city administrator.
Jared Rayquell, community and economic development.
Stephanie Reif, assistant finance director.
Russ Montgomery, filling in for Justin Behrens.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec director.
Wes Zuby, Wapaka Police Department.
Thanks, Wes. And Josh Warner is also with us tonight. He's just in the back. All right, let's go to the consent agenda. It looks like you have one addition there, Sandy.
Under letter A, monthly reports, number nine, the city administrator's monthly report for August was uploaded to the city website.
All right, with that, are there any items on the consent agenda that council members would like to see moved to the regular agenda? And then we would handle those individually? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda with that one addition. Discussion, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. Probably not giving Henry enough time, am I? And then, regular agenda. What you have on your regular agenda is what we're going to work with tonight. So, again, we would just need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Fair, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, under non-agenda items and announcements, we have, I think this is the third year in a row, we have this proclamation, which is on page 82 of your packet. This is basically designating December 1st, 2022, as Christmas Stamp Day in Wapaka, Wisconsin. And you can read that at your leisure. We would like to get a motion to approve that we place this on file.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Chestnut, that we place the proclamation for designating December 1st, 2022, as Christmas Stamp Day on file. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Public input, this is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, or any staff, or council members that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please give your name and address for the record. Limit your time to three minutes or less. Any public input? All right, let's go to community reports. We have Mike Kohler is here for the Danes Hall, reporting for Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network. So, Mike, good. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the staff, and guests. I submitted this report earlier to the city clerk, and request at least five minutes to read it into the record.
You're good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Today, I'm here on behalf of the Wapaka Arts and Cultural Network, also known as WACAN, to report from the perspective of the historic Danes Hall of Wapaka, and WACAN's role in placemaking here in Wapaka. Danes Hall of Wapaka, where history and hospitality come together to make memories that will last a lifetime. That was the vision I've always had for our Danes Hall, your Danes Hall. It has been three years only since we reopened Danes Hall as Wapaka's landmark memory-making place. And I say "place" in quotations. And the memories created by the WACAN team over these past years are countless. The Fine Arts Exhibit found a new home in Danes Hall, bringing art to the heart of Wapaka's historic district. The Bach Festival performs with historic Steinway and Viennese grand pianos, similar to those played by the actual pianist who wrote the words themselves, wrote the music themselves. Children's Christmas parties, holiday concerts, the Yuletide Trail, enlivened our holidays, as one visitor said, "like a Hallmark Holiday Movie." Danes Hall holds a historic collection of artwork from the Skayan painters of Denmark, which have been sent to us from Denmark. As shown here, this painting was painted 150 years ago, and captures a ship cresting the waves, like those who brought the immigrant, the Danish immigrants, to Wapaka. Danes Hall also archives one of the most complete collection of musical scores by Wapaka's Eddie Hanson, which was highlighted this year at the Winchester Academy's Roots of Jazz program, and where Wapaka's Pat Fair wrote and performed an original play, The Durable Dane, about the life of Wapaka's famed musician, Eddie Hanson. More recently, we opened the Granite Cellar, a place where local musicians can perform, and friends and families can just relax, a core value of which the Danes call "huga." Early in the Main Street renovation process, the city and its people had a long discussion on the topic of placemaking. During the process, we gave thought to recreating Wapaka's core downtown as a place where people gathered, watched the passage of generations, and made memories that could last a lifetime. The WACAN team imagined a space where public art would flourish, poetry would be etched in the pathways, public gardens and flowers would beautify the public space, and connect us to the natural environment. We imagined places built around people, not cars, parking lots, and malls. We imagine a place which frankly is dying in America. As economic development built larger parking lots, drive-through restaurants, and those shopping malls. In a sense, we imagined a place from our historic past. Take a look back to 2017, just five years ago. Danes Hall was abandoned and deteriorating. Main Street restoration was just developing, and posted notes in paper. Many of our historic buildings were decaying before our eyes. The Fine Art Exhibit exhibition was displayed over an ice rink at the Exhibition Center, and public art was limited to a few public murals. Today, look around at the places that this city, with the insight and imagination of WACAN, has created. Truly impressive. As I wrap up my report, I'm always taught when speaking to public officials to remember the ask. And I'd like to take the opportunity to imagine some new concepts and places with you, so that when I'm invited to speak to the council again sometime in the future, we can continue to discuss the developments of arts and culture in Wapaka. I will leave you with three thoughts, just three. I have many, but three. The North Main Street Plaza. I envision a new placemaking plaza east of Danes Hall, on the vacated part of North Main Street, north of Granite. A place where the community can gather outdoors with friends and family, as they glance southward down Main Street. A place where possibly the city's Christmas tree can be the North Star for your holidays. A place where parades are watched, music is heard, and a new generation builds memories in Wapaka. We seek the guidance, participation, and imagination of the council, and the citizens of Wapaka, to make this possible. Two. I imagine a place in Wapaka for outdoor performing arts, someplace here in downtown Wapaka. Imagine Shakespeare in the park, performing on summer evenings. Of course, Hamlet, Prince of Denmark, would be the first play. I imagine the steep sloping hills of Washington Park, just north of Danes Hall, with the river as a backdrop. The naturally pitched hillside provides tiered cedar seating. Could this bring a new opportunity to Wapaka as a destination for summer theater? Finally, a sustainability plan. How do we protect Wapaka, our Wapaka, for future generations? Does Wapaka have a sustainability plan? Perhaps we do, and I'm just not aware of it, which would not be unusual. As a scientist, I have been involved in sustainability planning, both at the national level and in my home community. Of course, when you think of sustainability, we all think of the environment. But include art in the city's sustainability plan. Art is key to our messaging about our values, our culture, and our vision of the future. Art sustains long after we have passed, long into the future. Just as this historic painting from 150 years ago captures a ship cresting atop the great waves, when you look closely, you'll see it has an American flag on its mast. This was painted by Carl Locker, a very famous Danish painter, and sent to us here in Wapaka. It captures the Viking-like spirit of their adventures to America, with many on board heading right here to Wapaka. Compare this to your most recent piece of artwork on Wapaka's Main Street, cresting canoe atop the great waves of Wapaka. By the way, I see a Viking ship up there, not a canoe. By Luke Ochterberg. I draw comparisons between these two pieces because they portray our connections to nature. Man cresting the waves is still in Wapaka's culture. It's still in a new generation. When interviewing the artists, Luke Ochterberg stated, "My brothers and I, and my extended family, back in the 90s, would always come to Wapaka and Crystal Rivers. We always had a lot of fun, mischief is fun perhaps, a lot of laughs, a lot of sunken canoes, a lot of splashes, and a lot of play, and a lot of joy and jubilee." Ochterberg speaks of his memories of this place, his adventures in nature, and sustains these in the value of art, sustains these values in the art. Poems embedded in the walkways speak to the nostalgic memories of our connection to the natural world. So as we move forward, let us think about including art in Wapaka's Sustainability Plan as our legacy, telling the story of a sustainable world to generations yet to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of Wapaka's staff, for your attention to my report.
Thanks, Mike. Any comments, council, staff?
Really, really nice, really, really nice, interesting.
Good job, Mike, thank you. All right, next up, Colin, good luck. Colin Dykstra wants to report on the Wapaka Area Youth Hockey Association.
That'll be difficult to follow. Everyone, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Colin, for those of you that might not know, I'm Colin Dykstra, and as a member of the Wapaka Area Youth Hockey Association, which we all call WEHA, I'm here to present a community report on this great organization. If we were to pick a few words this year to describe our outlook on the upcoming hockey season, we might say, "Welcome back to WEHA." Not only are we welcoming back last year's WEHA members, we're making a push to invite prospective members and families who haven't been involved in WEHA in the past to become part of this organization. In a broader sense, we're also inviting the entire community to come to the rink and check out all the fun that's happening inside. In order to support these goals and to start the season, WEHA has decided to host a party and provide some things for free. Let's start with the free. The WEHA Board has developed a First Year Skaters Are Free program, in which the registration fee for new members of WEHA is going to be waived. We also have very low costs, and for some levels, no cost, equipment rentals available. The bottom line is that if someone is interested in trying hockey and can make the commitment to come down to the rink, we can provide a lot of the requirements for free, so the overall cost to try hockey will be low. And now the party. WEHA is going to host a Welcome Back to WEHA picnic-style event this Saturday, September 24th, 12 noon to 3 p.m. at Swan Park, which will include an equipment swap, games and prizes, hopefully some kickball, maybe a bag toss competition, and some sauce hockey. And I'll tell you for certain, I know whenever there's a group of hockey kids together, something fun is bound to happen. There's going to be a couple of food trucks on site, so come down and get some lunch, meet the coaches, fellow players, and new players, and get all the information you need for the upcoming season. Okay, that being done, I'd like to use the rest of my time to talk about some of the facts and figures about WEHA. WEHA's current leadership, key contributors, our ongoing fundraising and volunteer efforts, recent investments and improvements made to the rink, and some new ideas we've been implementing, and some of the impacts we feel are having on the community. When you visit the rink this year, we'd like you to take note of the display of the team of pictures near the concession stand, and we'd like you to notice in the center of the team pictures, a list of families that were the founding members of WEHA. Many of you probably know them all. This year's board members, like all the board members, let me go back, the families, the founding members of WEHA, the families who donated considerable time and their resources to starting this program and building our rink. This year's board members, like all the board members who have served through the decades since this rink was built, are committed to building upon the tremendous gift that was given to this community by our founding members. After being elected to the board of WEHA by the current members of the organization, the board members involved get to spend countless hours volunteering to support our hockey program. You might think that no one in their right mind would sign up for such a thing, but that's not the case. We currently have 12 elected board members and one board member appointed by the mayor. Our president is Melanie Hurt, who does an excellent job of keeping us all on track and strongly represents us within the community. Vice President Luke Fleming, also an assistant coach. Treasurer is Pam Fulmer, our secretary, head parent, head team parent, and webmaster is Kendra Chicky. Board member Forrest Wright is also our director of hockey. Our ice scheduler, Pete Olson. Sheri Olson, his wife, is also on the board, makes sure Pete does his job as ice scheduler, and also helps train all of our scorekeepers. Another board member is Todd Peterson, who heads up our fundraising activities. Robert Scholes assists Todd with fundraising and is also an assistant coach. Our two newest, one of our newest members is Nate Abramson, who's going to be our head squirt coach this year. Our immediate past president is Howie Abhold, who continues to hold a board seat. And then finally, one of our other newest members is Dawson Bohm. And I would like to point out that for most board members, they get involved with WEHA because they have children directly in the program. Dawson, on the other hand, he's a young man, only a few years removed from playing in hockey himself, is involved because he and his family have had such a great experience being involved in WEHA growing up, he wants to help make sure WEHA continues to do well. He's a great member of our board, this community, and I believe is a fine example of the character that WEHA is striving to develop in the youth of our community. In addition to the board members, I want to point out a couple more people. Becky Neemuth is our tournament director, Steph McGregor, our head game scheduler, Tricia Altman is our register, registrar, Tom Grant, maintenance director, Megan Wright, equipment manager. Shannon Sting is our concessions director, Sarah Rogers is heading up our school skate program, where a lot of homeschooled kids come to the rink. She organizes that and gets homeschooled kids to come to the rink and do their skating program during the day. Gillian Peterson, I believe many of you know her, is in charge of our advertising program. And then Mara Schultz is an assistant coach, who's also instrumental in organizing, coordinating our fundraisers and programs. For this year, we have a great group of head coaches. Forrest Wright is going to be head coaching the Bantam Team, the 14U. Mike Pintar is going to head coach the Peewees. Nate Abramson and Jamie Bidnarik are going to head coach the Squirts. We've got Justin Tuss, an alumni of WEHA, is going to be coaching the Mites, and I get to coach the youngest level, the Rink Rats. That'll be my second year doing that, it's a whole lot of fun. There's a lot of assistant coaches at every level, and we couldn't do it without them. All of our staff are required by USA Hockey and WAHA, the Wisconsin Amateur Hockey Association, the overriding or overarching governing board of Wisconsin. To obtain coaching certifications every year, and beyond the minimum required for each level, many of our coaches, I'd say almost all, have consistently made efforts to gain experience in higher levels of certification than required for their role. And that helps our players, in that our players consistently improve throughout the season, and we have a lot of success making it two and competing in the Wisconsin State Tournament at each level. For instance, last year, both the Squirt 3A and the Peewee 3B teams won their state tournament. It was very exciting for some of the teams, one of the teams that was a back-to-back win for some of the kids. They had won the year before, and then this year. Outside of WEHA, we're also involved in hockey outside, in a larger group. Our director of hockey, Forrest Wright, was selected from all the coaches in the state to, to the honor of coaching the U-18 Select Girls Team last year, and his team was able to qualify and compete in the national tournament last spring in Texas. It tells you what kind of level of coaches I think we have here in Wapaka, and what a great asset it is to our children that are involved in the programs. Our coaches are also experts of having fun with our teams. When kids and their families get involved with WEHA, the overall goal is for the season to be fun, and to make it a positive experience for everybody. So when you come out, we're going to have a great time. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about our volunteering and fundraising efforts. Not only do all the WEHA members have to volunteer within our organization, we also volunteer outside of our organization in help of the community. For instance, this year, a summer group, this summer, a group of WEHA volunteers participated at the Dairy Extravaganza event. Last summer, we volunteered to assist with the Wapaka Foundry Company picnic, and we hope to do so in the future. We were unfortunate to miss this year due to so many members being out of town for hockey tournaments in the summer. That's about the only thing that would keep us from helping. Everyone on the board has said, "If your organization is in need of volunteers, contact us," and like I said, "If there's not a hockey tournament going on, we'll probably be able to help you." We're also actively participating in the fundraising efforts throughout the year to help WEHA. We hold an annual golf outing, held this year with the support of Hidden Waters Golf Club, and it was at the Hidden Waters Golf Club. This summer, we also held a brat fry at Pigley Wiggly. Last fall, we held a gun raffle to raise funds for the program. And this year, we're also doing currently, right now, a meat raffle, that will have 10 prize winners that can win anything from a quarter cow to a cooler of meat. I guess those things are popular in Wisconsin, I've never seen that kind of raffle before, but it's pretty cool. And we continue to have success with one of our most popular fundraisers, which is the WEHA Raffle Calendar. I hope some of you have bought it in the past, but it's a really neat way to support the hockey organization, find out who's involved in the program, and win some money, maybe two. Each year within WEHA, each team within WEHA every year hosts a weekend tournament throughout the season that raises funds for the club through entry fees and raffles of donated items. These tournaments typically begin on Friday night, with the championship games on Sundays. We think this is a great asset to the community as well. We bring people in for the whole weekend, you know? People come and stay in Wapaka in the middle of the winter to come play in a hockey tournament. In partnership with the Wapaka High School Team, WEHA also helps host a high school holiday tournament that brings more teams to the area between Christmas and New Year's for some competitive hockey. Let's see, in addition to all the support that we receive from local businesses advertising within the rink, over the past several years, two businesses have provided significant donations that we would like to recognize again. First, Peterson Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram donated in, I think, 2020, an American Landmaster Cruiser UTV, side-by-side electric UTV, which WEHA then put into a raffle, and it yielded over $28,000 in additional support to WEHA, and also 21 additional cash prize winners. We had a, and somebody got to take the UTV home, so that person was really happy. Second, last year, Farmer State Bank, and this is really tremendous, donated $90,000 in order to purchase a much-needed Zamboni surfacing machine for the club. This machine is used every time the skaters take the ice, and it's a very important donation to our club. It's really well, you can't say enough about how much we appreciate it. In addition to the Zamboni, the past several years have seen significant investment in the rink itself. Locker room addition was completed, and subsequently landscaping and retaining walls outside the rink were rebuilt. We are continuing to add to the retaining wall to help improve the looks of the rink and increase parking spots to users. Once the locker room addition was completed, the old high school locker room was converted into kind of a really neat multi-use room within the rink that people use in different ways. New ideas, this brings me to some of the new ideas we've been implementing over the past several years. First, the addition to the locker room has increased the available space for teams, and has made our rink more attractive location for teams or groups who have a need for ice in central Wisconsin. We have tried to capitalize on this by renting ice time to these other organizations. Our location just off of Highway 10 and centrally located within the state is attractive to AAA hockey organizations that pull their players from throughout the state. The Wisconsin Amateur Hockey Association has also begun to use the facility for spring and fall leagues that, again, pull players from across the state. This last weekend, we had a bunch of hockey games, even before our hockey season started. So this is a great benefit to our community, and also it helps to lower the cost, we feel, for the players and people here in Wapaka. In addition, WAHA has utilized our facility in the spring of the year to have a tryout camp that brings over 100 players and their parents into Wapaka for the weekend, for a weekend of high-level tryouts. It gets another weekend that fills up our hotels in the area. One of the least utilized ice times at Wapaka was typically Friday nights. In an attempt to utilize that ice time and involve the community and highlight our players, we started what we call our Friday Night Game Series. Immediately before the start of these games, players from each team, and these are teams that are down from squirts, so 10-year-olds, eight-year-olds, Mites, eight-year-olds, 12-year-olds, before the start of each game, each member of the team gets individually introduced over loudspeakers, and between periods, we have chuck-a-puck competitions, and the whole game feels like a professional event, and the kids are just loving it. And the people that come from out of town also love it, their kids love it. In addition, at each game, we attach a local business sponsor and highlight their business during the game. This local business that have participated last year noted an immediate positive impact, and all who have, and all who participated last year committed to doing it again this year. Those of us within the WEHA organization really believe we're having a positive impact on our community, from teaching our children the physical skills that come with hockey, to the mental skills that come with winning and losing, and setting goals and trying to achieve them, to impact our community by organizing events and bringing hockey families from around the state to our great community. We hope you'll agree that WEHA is an important part of Wapaka. If you've got kids, grandkids, friends, or neighbors that are hockey age, please suggest that they give hockey a try. This is the year to do it, it won't be any less expensive than this year. If you can, make a point to get down to the rink to watch a game and support our kids and the organization. Follow WEHA on Facebook, get involved in one of our fundraisers, come down to an open skating. Please do what you can to support this great organization. In short, welcome back to WEHA. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to give this report, and also for assigning me to liaison for WEHA. I appreciate it, and everybody appreciates your time.
Thanks, Colin. Very nice. Everybody have any questions or comments? Thank you. All right, let's get into the meat of the meeting tonight, then. We have a couple of unfinished items that we have to do first, and this is ordinance number 15-20. number 15 dash 2022. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Wapaka Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan. And Jared, I think you're doing this one here.
Thank you, Mayor. So this one starts on page 84 of your packet. I'll say this agenda item and the next one do go hand in hand. This first one is looking specifically at the comprehensive plan. So the Wapaka Foundry did approach the city looking for some assistance, you know, some direction on housing for their employees. This is something we looked into the River North area for, kind of tried to work it out with our current developer and the foundry, just wasn't hitting the right spark. After those conversations had somewhat died off, the founder came back to us and asked the feasibility of somewhat, you know, pushing their own housing project that is somewhat onsite to their Plant 2 site on Brunner Drive. You know, working through this with them, I was determined that, you know, that the site they were proposing would be a feasible site with some possible modifications that would need to be looked into, but a feasible site, and it really accomplished the goal of provide, providing housing for their employees that was close by their plant, within walking distance for maybe those temporary workers they have that do not have cars. So they came forward looking to section off this corner on Tower Drive and Royalton Street that is currently not utilized, is just green space for their parcel. They are looking to section it off, which they have already done. They are now looking to zone it to a proper zoning district that could accommodate multifamily. As part of that, they need to change the comprehensive plan from its current industrial designation to neighborhood mixed use, which would allow it to get to a commercial district and allow multifamily. So this is a comprehensive plan amendment requesting this specific parcel to be changed on the flu map from industrial to neighborhood mixed use.
All right, so looking at just the first ordinance, which is 15 dash 2022, this is the second reading. As I understand, we have not had anybody that has had any comments on this, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Pritchardski, that we approve ordinance number 15 dash 2022. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll?
Lori.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lori.
I just want to say with that, I did go up and look at the site, and I, I'm really excited because we have such a shortage of housing and places to rent for people. And in the job that I did, I could not find barely anything. So this is, I think, exciting for the Wapaka Foundry, but it's, it's an incentive in the community that more and more of this is so needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Anybody else? All right, Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
And Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, so 1520 has been approved, or 1522 has been approved, I'm sorry. And then, do you have any, do you have additional comments for the next one?
Uh, I'll just summarize just a little bit.
Sure.
The, the next one starts on page 88. So now, this is specifically referring to the zoning change. So the last one's for the future land use map, this is now for the zoning change, which changes the zoning from I-2 heavy industrial to B-3 general commercial, which is in line with the neighborhood mixed use, future land use designation that was just voted on.
Okay. Any questions? We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Chestnut, that we approve ordinance amending 16 dash 2022, and ordinance amending 17.01 point 102 zoning district map as allowed for under 17.700. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll?
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, Colin. Thanks, Jared, sorry. Next up, we have new business. This is Halloween on Main to temporarily expand the premise and open intoxicant request. I'm guessing you're gonna do this?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Mayor Smith. So on page 99, there's a memo, and Mitch Swenson from the Chamber of Commerce put this together. Mitch has been kind of a planning committee member in the planning efforts for the Halloween on Main event, and Mitch has been at what I would call our business liaison. If you remember, last year, there was live music in a couple different locations, at least two. There, I believe there's going to be more this year, and this request is specifically to have a licensed premise basically on the entire closed area of Main Street. You can see a map on page 100. You can see the yellow border is the area that is being requested to allow for open intoxicants. This would allow someone to go into the pub or Weasels and walk with a plastic container of beer or whatever amongst that area. And then, all of the areas marked in red, which would be the areas where you would be able to get out, would be signed that there would be no alcohol beyond that point. This has been talked about with Chief Brian Hozell. Chief Brian Hozell saw the map, had no issues with that request, and I guess the recommendation would be to expand that request from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Friday, October 28th, for the area outlined in the map on page 100 of your packet.
All right, and I think as you remember, council and people that are watching tonight, last year was the first year that they did this, and it was a huge success, and so they want to expand on that success for this year. So I would recommend that we approve this request. Need a motion to do that.
Jump in quick. Aaron, we would also need to expand the premise description for Simpsons and Weasels and Fats Gretchen's for the five bars, because they have the liquor licenses and they're expanding outside of their license premise.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
For clarifying that, appreciate it.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we want to make a motion?
Move to approve the request to use expanded premises and street closures for the...
We're only talking about the expanded...
Only one?
Yeah, just the expanded...
Oh, just the expanded. So the expanded premise.
Premise and open intoxicant.
That's my motion.
Okay. We're gonna do that, the other one next.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Pritchardski, second by Fair, that we approve the expansion of premise and open intoxicant request to include what's on page 100 of your, your map, of your packet. Any discussion? Go ahead, Lori.
Okay, so there has been some discussion with the community in, in the area. The grocery store has been really unique to this. And with the concern is that Halloween and trick-or-treat has always been just, you know, moms and dads and kids walking the streets, and there hasn't been alcohol. And when I looked at it, you know, it did make me think a little bit about stepping away from the real tradition of trick-or-treat for kids and parents to be out there, and that it, for it to be free of alcohol, because going door-to-door, they're not, they're not, you know, they're not gonna see this. So I did say I would mention it, and I am therefore mentioning it, okay? So it is a thought that is in the community about, because they loved that downtown area. So that would be my discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, Sandy will take the roll.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
No.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
And Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one no, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Aaron. Next up is the Halloween on Main Street closures, and Laura, I think you're handling this one.
Sure, so, thank you. If you look on page 111, that shows that we are gonna have the event mainly on Main Street, going from Badger, which is south, to north, which is Granite and Water Street. And then, if you go to one, page 112, it displays a little, a little bit more detail how we are gonna block off a little bit of Session Street, Fulton on both sides, Union Street on both sides as well for some of our events. We are in communication with a lot of the same vendors as we had last year, and a lot of them are coming back, and we are getting requests from lots of other vendors as well. So we should have very full streets with a lot of exciting and fun stuff for our families.
Great. All right, so the request is to close Main Street from Granite Street all the way to Badger Street, and that also includes, I'm sorry, so there is some things that are also on Union Street and Fulton Street, too, it looks like.
Yep.
And Session Street. Do we have a motion to approve this?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve, uh, street closures for the Halloween event, Halloween on Main. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Say no? Motion carried. All right, we're back to Jared now, then. We have conditional use permit for Fox Valley Technical College at 1979 Godfrey Drive. Jared?
Uh, to keep these short, this agenda item, which starts on page 114 of your packets, as well as the next agenda item, are relatively similar. So this one specifically is for Fox Valley Technical College, which had recently went through the zoning change to properly zone it, to accommodate its land use, as it was previously zoned heavy industrial. So with its new zoning classification, it is now coming forward to be able to gain full compliance and gain the conditional use permit approval for its use. So to put it plainly, just kind of a cleanup based on the recent zoning change that the city had proposed for this parcel.
All right, so we're looking for, this was approved by City Planning Commission, or recommended to council by City Planning, so we'd be looking for approval of this conditional use permit for Fox Valley Tech.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we approve the conditional use permit for Fox Valley Technical College at 1979 Godfrey Drive. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll?
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
He left.
Is he done?
His video's on.
Yeah, he said he had to leave it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
And Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, next, we have conditional use permit for Carousel Gymnastics LLC, which is at 1906 Godfrey Drive.
Uh, some, again, similar instance, it's just, just a cleanup based on the recent zoning change for Carousel Gymnastics parcel that was initiated by the city.
Again, we'll be looking for a motion to approve. It was recommended by City Planning. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, and second by Fair, that we approve conditional use permit for Carousel Gymnastics, which is at 1906 Godfrey Drive. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll?
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, we have six-month review conditional use permit for Home and Away Ministries Incorporated, which is at 705 West Fulton Street. Jared, again, I, I know you're probably gonna go this way, but just give a little bit of history for people that maybe have forgotten why we're in this review.
Yeah, of course. So this is actually a conditional use process that went through, I'll say, quite a bit, quite a long time ago, probably eight months now. This was originally reviewed by Jeff Sanders, the previous zoning administrator. He had went through the whole process with them, and just kind of was finishing out the process when I got here with them. So he had went through and recommended a conditional approval for this conditional use permit, with one of the requirements being that the conditional use permit shall be reviewed by Plan Commission at six months, at which time the conditional use permit can be altered or approved and sent to the common council for final approval. So over this six-month and a little longer timeframe, I did try to work with any of the other departments, such as DPW, the PD, just collecting if there's, if there were any violations or complaints on that parcel for Ruby's Pantry, which would be 705 West Fulton Street. Upon asking them frequently, nothing really was ever arising. I did, before bringing this final approval for this conditional use permit forward, I did reach out to both Chief Hozell and Justin Behrens, the Department of Public Works Director, asking if there were any complaints, you know, or any violations, if they had any concerns that we should take into consideration for this final CUP approval. Both had said that there really were no major complaints in regards to the use of the parcel specifically. So with that, with those comments, no further conditions were added. Just that one condition that a six-month review would be needed was taken out. All other conditions stayed the same, and of course, they would be governed by any of our typical, you know, zoning nuisance ordinances in terms of traffic, things like that. So I guess from a staff level, felt pretty comfortable not adding any conditions. This was taken to Plan Commission, where they did recommend approval. If you wanted to specifically see the conditions, the conditions, only conditions that were being placed on this final approval, you can see that on page 136 in my memo.
Thanks, Jared. So basically, what's happening is there's a conditional use permit, we're deleting one item off of the conditional use permit, and we're asking that you approve that at this time. Okay? Anybody want to make a motion to approve that?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Pritchardski, that we approve of the conditional use permit for Home and Away Ministries at 705 West Fulton Street. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll?
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, we have a certified survey map for Michael Cook at 1948 Godfrey Drive. This is also a City Planning Commission item that's being brought forward to council.
Thank you, Mayor. This one starts on page 156 of your packet. So this is a certified survey map being brought forward, a little different. So typically, this would just be a lotline adjustment, since no new parcel's actually being created. A little different. So typically, this would just be a lot line adjustment since no new parcel is actually being created. But what is unique about this request is that the landowner of nineteen forty-eight Godfrey Drive, Mr. Mike Cook, who is in the audience today if you have specific questions for him. Yes, he is still there. Good. He is looking to purchase a chunk of the adjacent parcel, which is actually owned by the city. So he's looking to purchase that chunk from the city. Through this process, he needs a certified survey map showing how much he is proposing to take or buy. And that way we can base the cost off of, you know, prorate the cost per acre based on what exactly he's taking. So per the surveyor, he is looking to purchase approximately ten thousand three hundred and forty-eight square feet. That would be added to parcel number thirty-four twenty-seven thirty-three six, nineteen forty-eight Godfrey Drive in the city at thirty thousand an acre, prorating it based on that ten thousand three hundred and forty-eight. He'd be looking at a purchase price of seven thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. There's a calculation there if you'd like to see it. So this process would include the certified survey map going to Plan Commission, which was already done. It was recommended to council, which is here tonight for a final decision. If approved, the certified survey map will be signed and recorded, after which our attorney, Attorney Sorensen, will draft the purchase documents and proceed with the purchase process. So staff would recommend the approval of the certified survey map. To go into a little deeper, what he's looking to do, he has run out of parking on his parcel, so he's looking to expand the parking, which would be on his right side or east side. You know, there was mention of possibly depending on how the business grows, expands, you know, it could move room to doing an expansion off the back. But, you know, not a plan at this time, but just leaving it open with this new land being purchased. So at the moment, it would just be expansion of the parking lot to allow easier access for his employees on the side entrance or from the side.
All right, so as Jared says, we, City Planning is recommending that we approve of this certified survey map.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Peterson that we approve certified survey map for Michael Cook at nineteen forty-eight Godfrey Drive. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll?
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Meele.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Jared. Thanks for working injured tonight. Next up, we have resolution number fifteen twenty-five. This is authorizing cost share grant from Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. And Russ, you're doing that.
Thanks, Mayor. On page one sixty, the packet is the copy of the authorizing resolution fifteen twenty-five. Staff is looking at applying for another urban forestry grant. And this is part of the requirement for the grant before, or at application time, that we submit this saying that the city is indeed interested and planning on fulfilling the grant. We did one identical to this last year at this time, about this time, for the grant that we received this year.
All right, so again, staff is recommending that we approve of this resolution fifteen twenty-five. Do we want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Fair that we approve of resolution number fifteen twenty-five authorizing cost share grant from Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll?
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Meele.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, and next we have license report number fifteen ninety. This is for, as we call it, operators license for bartenders. You have four names listed on page one sixty-two of your packet. We would need a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson that we approve license report number fifteen ninety. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, say no? Motion carried. All right, issues, discussions, there are none tonight, although we will talk about something else in a second here. Communications recommendations of the mayor, a couple of things. Don't forget that we have a committee, the whole meeting right after this council meeting tonight. It is going to be a closed session, so we will, council members will be in here and staff as we ask them to be in here for tonight. And then we also have a city council, a special city council meeting next Tuesday.
Correct, at five thirty.
Next Tuesday at five thirty. That is also a closed session beginning to that meeting. We do expect that we will have discussion before the closed session and discussion after the council meeting with hopefully an approval of, of what we discuss in the closed session. So we have two closed sessions, one tonight and then one next Tuesday. Anything else that you could think of?
Mayor.
Public? Russ, go ahead.
Two announcements. The hydrant flushing date was changed to nine twenty-five through nine thirty. And those hours are ten PM to six AM and also from ten three to ten seven, same times. And customers may notice that the water in their taps may be white. Let it run for a while. That's normal. And is usually entrainment in minerals from the flushing process. And if the water doesn't improve after a short time, then contact the water department directly. And secondly, tomorrow is the bid opening for the public works facility building, and that'll be two o'clock here at City Hall.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else for the good of the meeting? All right, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, say no? Motion carries. We're adjourned at six fifty-eight PM. Have a great night, everybody.